Like to, the regular stated meeting of the City Council of Morganton will now resume for business. This is February 2nd, 2015. Thank you everyone for being here tonight. This time, I'm going to ask Forrest Fleming to lead us with our pledge of allegiance.
If you'll join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you much, be seated.
Reverend Heather Kilburn. There you are. Invocations being given by Reverend Heather Kilburn of the St. Matthews United Methodist Church. Thank you for being with us.
Good evening Mayor, Councilman. Thank you so much for the invitation. Will you pray with me? Gracious Lord, we thank you for allowing us to live in this beautiful blessed community. We ask that you guide us in all things, that we may make wise decisions and follow you. We pray for our children, Lord, and help us to help them grow so that they may have hope in tomorrow, that their families may be able to thrive. We pray for the poor, the hungry, and the homeless. May all their needs be shared among us. And Lord, we pray for the senior citizens. May they have the security that they need. And Lord, we lift up this council and we just ask that you bless them with wisdom and show them the will. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you for being with us tonight. Okay, introduction of our council on my far right is Ronnie Thompson, Councilman. Forrest Fleming, Councilman. Louis Vina is our city attorney. Mel Corneille, Mayor. Sally Sandy, our city manager. Sidney Simmons, City Councilman. John Cantrell, City Councilman. Kelly Russell, Recording Secretary. And we have Becky Brinkley over in the corner interpreting for our deaf community. Again, I want to welcome everybody and thank everyone for being here. We've got a couple of retirees and one we're gonna delay for a couple of, reading the resolution for a couple of months. The first one will be Chung Pow, a maintenance worker at the Cemetery Grounds Department. And I will, Chung Pow was employed by the City of Morganton as maintenance worker in the Public Works Cemetery Grounds Department on April 3rd, 2006. And whereas Chung Pow has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Public Works Cemetery Grounds Department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for nine years and one month. And whereas Chung Pow retired from the City of Morganton as maintenance worker in the Public Works Cemetery Grounds Department on February 1st, 2015. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Chung Pow and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Chung Pow, adopted this the second day of February 2015. Mel Corneille, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. Take the form of the motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
John?
It's precious.
Here's a check.
Thank you.
Here's a resolution.
Thank you.
If you want to say anything, you don't have to. But just get a little closer and you can say a few words if you want to, okay?
This is my pleasure and honors I can working in the City of Morganton. I come here sixteen years. I never go to other place because I love this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay Ronnie, will you read Bobby's resolution?
A resolution honoring Bobby L. Nidefer. Whereas Bobby L. Nidefer was employed by the City of Morganton as wastewater plant operator in the wastewater department on October 31st, 2005. And whereas Bobby L. Nidefer has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the wastewater department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for nine years, six months. And whereas Bobby L. Nidefer returned, retired from the City of Morganton as waste treatment plant operator in the wastewater department on February 1st, 2015. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Bobby L. Nidefer and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Bobby L. Nidefer approve this the second day of February 2015. Mel Corneille, Mayor. Sally Sandy, Clerk.
Make it some form of motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Bobby?
Aye.
I'd just like to say thank you to everyone. It's been my pleasure working for the City of Morganton. I've worked at the wastewater treatment plant and you couldn't ask for a greater bunch of people to work with and for. And thank you.
Dwayne Metten, I've got a twenty year pen for you.
Come on Dwayne.
Got your bosses with you too, don't you?
Yeah.
Joe Blumetti is not here. Public Safety Captain, twenty years. And Art Helms. I think we have something for Art besides just a pen. Art, you want to come up front? Well, I don't know where it's at. Chad had something for him, but I don't know where it's at.
He's making fun.
What you talking about?
He's making fun.
Look at tomorrow.
Yeah.
What are you shaking your head for? Thank you Art, I appreciate it.
Twenty-five great years.
Yeah, without a doubt. Public Advocacy Issues and Strategies, introduction of our Board Chairman at Morgan Housing Authority, Tom Bland, Reverend Tom Bland, to introduce us to our new Housing Authority Director. Thank you for coming, Tom.
Mayor Corneille, members of the City Council and city staff, city manager Sandy, Mr. Vina, those in attendance, I am very honored and privileged to present to you Mr. Steve Velar, who on November 3rd, 2014 began his work as Executive Director of the Morgan and Housing Authority. Mr. Velar comes to us from the community of DeRider, Louisiana, which he tells me is located in southwestern Louisiana, some thirty miles from the border of Texas. But he is a native of Gonzalez, Louisiana, which is located in southeastern Louisiana between Baton Rouge and New Orleans. Mr. Velar, for three years prior to coming to his position as Executive Director of the Morgan Housing Authority, served as Executive Director of the DeRider Housing Authority. And prior to that, he served in other functions there and also at the Housing Authority in Dequincy, Louisiana. We did a national search for a new Executive Director last year, as we anticipated, though not happily, the retirement of Wallace H. Duke Logan, who for some seventeen years was Executive Director of our Morgan Housing Authority and gave distinguished service in that capacity. But we, in the course of having a number of very qualified applicants from the public housing industry, also a number of applicants from our local community here, all of whom were very distinguished, each in his or her own way, we were very blessed indeed to receive an application from Mr. Velar, who happens to have some family in Hendersonville, North Carolina, and who to my knowledge has never lived outside the city, the state of Louisiana, but tells me he's very happy to be on higher ground here in Burnt County, North Carolina. He has very special expertise in the area of maintenance in particular. And one evidence of that is his longtime service on the Louisiana Housing Council, which was something of a statewide oversight group for public housing in Louisiana. He was the chairman of the Maintenance Committee of that group, and he's already demonstrating his maintenance expertise there at the Morgan Housing Authority. We're very delighted to have Steve with us. He and his wife Vanessa have four children together, and they already amazingly have thirteen grandchildren, though I think I'm somewhat, I know I'm significantly older than Mr. Velar. But we're just delighted to have him, and if you'll just bear with me a moment, I would like for him to say a word as well.
Thank you. It's very good to be here, and I just want to say how welcome we have been coming here. And I haven't lived out of Louisiana, but this is literally higher ground, and we have loved it here. And the community has been so wonderful in just welcoming us here, and it's a great authority to be able to come and to be a part of, and I look forward to working with all of y'all in the future too. Thank y'all.
Thank you. We'll tell you the cooperation between the City of Morganton and the Morganton Housing Authority, as Tom can tell you, goes way back and very, very much appreciate your taking the job and look forward to working with you, City to Housing Authority from here on out.
Yes, me too. Thank you. And we're very grateful for that cooperation too, as Board of Commissioners, we thank you all.
Yes, thank you.
I hope you'll be able to cook Cajun food.
A little bit. My wife has been cooking for him, so they've gotten a little taste of.
That's great. E-billing update Sally, or Karen, Karen Duckey.
Well, all I can say is wow, do I have something good to tell you. Couple of years ago, Forrest Fleming approached Sally and I, Councilman Fleming, and challenged me to see what I could do about working on our, the city being able to take online payments and to do e-billing. Well, we accomplished, a little over a year ago, we accomplished the first task, which was to take online payments, and that's been very successful. And I am so excited to share with you now that we are live on e-billing. So, what I want to do is show you a little bit about e-billing, and then I'm going to tell you what it is. What e-billing is, is we now offer our tax, our tax customers, our utility customers, and our cable internet TV customers, the option to receive an e-bill instead of a paper bill. So again, this is an option, it's not a requirement, and it's very easy to do, and so I put together just a few colorful slides, and I promised not to take more than a minute and a half to show them to you. So if you decide that you want to be e-billed, to opt out of paper statements, you're just going to go to the city's website, which of course is razzle-dazzling, thanks to Joshua. And what you can see on your screen is the homepage, and where you see the green arrow, it's pointing to Pay Bills Online, My Utilities. You're going to click on that, and watch what happens. Ta-da. What happens then is you get a, you get taken to our payment portal, and there you're going to simply log in. As it says on the top there, you enter your email address and your password. If it's your first time, you're going to register. If you've already registered, you just log in. After that, it takes you to this screen, and what you can see on the left is you would select your bill type on the left and then click on the View Bill button. For instance, actually, this is me. If you're clicking on Utilities, you would see then the, your most current utility statement, and you would click on View Bill, which is the green arrow on the right. This takes you now to the South Data website. South Data is the company we've partnered with to provide this service. And your bill would come up, and on the left side, you would pick which bill you wanted to view or to look at. Obviously, we only, being as we just went live on Friday, you only have one bill to choose right now. Pretty easy. Now, from here, you would go to the, you would to register for e-billing, okay? Up to this point, everybody can go now and look at their bills. But at this point, if you really, if you want to go the extra step and sign up for e-billing, you're going to go to the Morganton.estatement.net website, which amazingly looks just like this in front of you. And you would create an account. You'll need your registration number, which was in purple on the previous screen. You can kind of see where my green arrow was there. That box is actually kind of purply. Light purple. And you would sign in using your registration ID, and that sets you up as an e-statement. And from that point forward, you would get an email, just like Verizon or Duke Power or some of the other larger utilities do. And from here, you also have the option, right from here, to pay your statement online. You can either pay by credit card, you can pay by e-check. And remember of course, that if you pay by e-check online, there is no fee, that hasn't changed. And clicking there on the left, by that left arrow, then just takes you right back to the payment portal where you started. So it's very user-friendly. My crews and the business office are more than happy to help anybody who has any questions. And we just think this is a good thing. And obviously, it's, we're all about customer service, so give us a call if you have questions. Do you gentlemen have any questions?
Karen, I have one question.
Sure.
I already have my bank account drafted. Is there any advantage to changing from that to this e-billing?
You can still do both. I mean, you can still have us e-bill you, you will still get a, you're still getting a paper statement now. So obviously, as the accountant in me, I would love to see people sign up for the, for e-billing, because then we save the postage cost and the printing cost. So is there any, it's just up to you. I mean, I guess my personal.
But you don't have to change your payment. I mean, it'll still come out of your bank account, just like it is now.
Exactly.
You don't have to change anything about that.
Yeah, and you know, I mean, I think we all are cognizant of identity theft, and that's one less thing you get in your mailbox, if you, in your US mailbox, if you, if you sign up for e-billing. It's a really good thing. So no, but it won't change. If you've got bank draft now, it doesn't change anything. And I'll also say that the bills have all been modernized, they're very colorful now, and they have lots of little icons on them. And I'm also happy to share with you that Joshua did all the design work, it did not cost our taxpayers any money to have those bills redesigned, and Joshua did an amazing job. So, great example, I think, of a team effort here.
Thank you, thank you Karen.
Have any other questions?
Thank you for your diligence in getting it done. It took a while, but I appreciate it very much, and I want to tell Forrest, Forrest has a great love for this community and bringing it up to Karen, and very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Community House, Sally.
It says Sharon, but she is not well, and we didn't want her to come here and share that with the rest of us. Just wanted to remind everyone that as of this past Wednesday, the Community House is operating out of the First United Methodist Church. So if you have regular meetings there, they are occurring at the church. And let you know that, again, the team effort and all the help, there was a lot of planning, a lot of, a lot of angst that went into prior to the move. The move lasted one day, had a lot of work done by the Water Department and the Electric Department prior to and during, and very grateful for that. Recreation was phenomenal, was the word that I was told, in accomplishing the move. And also, thank you goes out to Queen City, who helped with the equipment moving, because we don't have the trucks and the lifts to do that, and they were happy to help us with that. And also, a thank you to the Health Department, because they have been great in getting inspections done and working with us on getting the new operation up and running.
Very good. Downtown Development Association Projects and Main Street Upgrades.
And Abby's here to do that.
Abby Gentry.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. I am here on behalf of Sharon Jablonsky to give you an update. As you are all aware, the Main Street Office has many partners throughout downtown and the city, and one of those is the Downtown Development Association. The Main Street Office has partnered with the DDA to provide trash and recycling bins to downtown in preparation for the 2015 events and the North Carolina Main Street Conference that's going to be held here in mid-March. We have hired local business to manufacture these bins, which include twelve trash cans to first replace the ones that are damaged that we already have, and then to place additional trash cans in key traffic areas throughout downtown that are, do not currently have access to trash bins. Then we will be receiving twelve recycling bins, which is going to be an additional service for downtown, and the DDA has partnered and is assisting in the amount of $6,000 toward these recycling bins. And we are very fortunate to have them assisting in this project. And then along with the recycling bins and the trash cans, we will have the downtown benches refurbished as well. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
The recycling that's done, Abby, will that be done by our Public Works Department?
I believe it's going to be through Simply Green Recycling.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you Abby.
Thank you so much.
Public Safety Calendars. Ronnie, Chief?
Madam Manager, City Council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for this opportunity to get up and introduce you to Calendar 2015 Calendar that Public Safety produced, which is a little bit unusual project for us, but it gave us an opportunity to put our face out into the public and partner with some local businesses to raise some funds that we use on, for community service projects that we do each year. Major Billy Bradshaw went to, went to a training conference this summer, and when he come back, he had an idea to produce a calendar. He had met a company at this conference called Roy's Publications, and what they do is they specialize in fundraising through calendars. And they go out into the community and they sell advertisements to local businesses, and then they put public safety faces on the calendars as an advocate for us, so that we can be recognized in the community. And then, we, once they sell those, then they print the calendars, and then we'll go to each business and to the public and distribute those calendars. And we were, we were able to print and distribute seven hundred and fifty calendars, and Joey Belanger are there, and community officers been going out to the businesses and distributing those for us. And once the profits, what we call profits, it comes back to us, once we pay for the publication of the calendar, the money that's left comes back to us. We were able to raise $2,500 to use for community projects such as Blue Wales and Operation Safe Haven. So it was a big benefit for, for the Department of Public Safety.
Very good, thank you guys. Any questions to the Chief?
Good job.
Thank you all. Joey, good work. Upcoming events at Kama, Over the Rainbow Thursday, February 5th at 7:30. Lady Smith Black Mamboza, Mamboza Tuesday, February 10th, 7:30. Million Dollar Quartet Tuesday, February 24th at 7:30. And then of course, very important, our City Council Workshop, February 20th, 2015, and the Morgan and City Council Chambers, this room. And we will start at 7:30, I think you said, right?
7:30 AM.
Municipal Power Agency Number One.
Okay. The Rate Committee has started their meetings. They've had their first meeting, looking at numbers for next year's budget, looking at a possibility to refinance some debt. And when they get back together for their March meeting, we will know more, and should know soon after that what type of wholesale power increases or rate changes may be coming our way for the budget season.
Okay. Consent Agenda, Sally.
Tonight, the consent agenda has four individual items on it. Consider those to be non-controversial. Would ask that you approve those in one motion unless someone wants something discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, that includes minutes from the January 5th Council Meeting, the 2015 Downtown Calendar of Events, the advertisement date for unpaid real estate taxes, and that is proposed to be April 1st, 2015. And then consideration of surplus and sale of the old stage curtain from the auditorium, and that is proposed to be sold to the town of Hildebrand for $1,000.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion second. Question, if anything? All in favor say aye. Okay, new business, public hearing, and I'll open it up. Public hearing for the City of Morganton's Consolidated Plan for 2015 Year and 2019. Sally.
And we have Lisa Hilton here tonight, who is our administration guidance for our CDVG entitlement monies. We have to hold a public hearing to gather information, because as the spring continues, the staff will be working to put together a plan for you.
That's correct. This is a requirement, we will have another public hearing in April, and we'll have more details then about what our plans are. Every five years, we produce this plan, we develop it, we get lots of input from lots of people in the area. In the past, the items that we did, we did the grants and nonprofits, sidewalks, our small business lawn program. This year, we've done some clearance through our slum and blot activities. So those are some items that we are considering to continue, and then we'll take any, you know, comments from the public or the council, if you have any ideas or anything you would like for us to look at.
Anyone wishing to address the plan? Close the count by public hearing, Council.
Make a motion to direct staff to proceed with the development of the Consolidated Action Plan for fiscal year 2015, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion second, discussion. All in favor say aye. opposed?
And obviously, we're going to be working on this over the next couple of months, so if you're out and about and you hear something that folks would like to have considered, just let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Careful going home in this wind. Consideration of Amendment to Schedule of Fees and Charges to Comply with New Sign Ordinance, Sally.
Actually, with the new zoning ordinance. Last month you, well actually, I guess in December, we adopted the new zoning ordinance. And as a result of that, several of the things in our Schedule of Fees and Charges is no longer accurate. So these are planned changes to that, so that we are in compliance with that ordinance. We have three items that are included on here. One of them does deal with the sign ordinance and the part of that. You can have multiple wall signs now, you can have different sizing, and the recommended permit fee for your consideration tonight is to set a fee of $1 per square foot. And that would be the price that someone would pay for their sign permit. We'll tell you that when you look at two thirty square foot wall signs, that makes that $60, pretty easy math, right? That is a decrease. If you had done that today, that would be $75. So we are recommending a consideration of something that we think is, is pretty reasonable and pretty fair to folks. The other two changes with this in, deal with the two opportunities that you have for special exceptions. With the new ordinance, you don't have a special exception permit any longer, but you can ask for a certificate of non-conforming adjustment review. And that's the new name. And Lee can talk about the details of that, I know we've talked about that before. Staff is recommending that you leave the $300 fee in place that existed for the special exception permit, no change in that. That helps to cover the advertising costs, which is still a part of that process, and administrative costs associated with going through that process. The second one is the application for an alternative design review. With the new zoning ordinance, we adopted some design guidelines that are a part of that, but you have an opportunity to go through a review and look at alternatives to that. That will come before the Planning Commission and the City Council, if you make application for that. Recommending again, leaving the $600 in place, which is what you would pay today. Again, there are advertisement costs and such associated with that, and administrative costs, and this will cover a portion. costs, and this will cover a portion of that. So recommending, basically, those two stay the same, get new titles, and that the permit fee for signage go to a dollar per square foot.
I move to amend the schedule of fees and charges to establish new sign permit fees, certificate of nonconforming adjustment appliance fees, and an alternative design review fee.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, number two, consideration of the Redevelopment Commission to formally go dormant, declare an end to East Union Redevelopment Project, and transfer the assets to the city. Sally.
For about 20 years now, we have been working with the Morganton Redevelopment Commission to eliminate slum and blight on the eastern end of town. You are sitting in the middle of a project that was a part of that commission's efforts, several others around. The commission has continued meeting and, and considered more property sales and more development. However, at this time, they really feel like their purpose and what they set out to accomplish in the eastern side of town has been accomplished. And that for the rest of development and activities that happen over here, that the City Council is sitting in a, in a place where you could handle that, and that you don't need them as the intermediary for that any longer. They, they would still, you know, be in existence, they would just basically be dormant, meaning that the projects that they were undertaking in this area would come straight to you and not go through them. In order to do that, there, there are several things that, that we recommend. The first thing, if, if you accept that and would like to do that, would recommend that you entertain an audit contract with Eric Bowman. We have been in contact with the state local government commission, and he has quoted in a contract price of $1,000 to do a final audit. Basically, that will end their record-keeping, make sure that as we do the transfer, that everything is clean on both sides, which is a really good opportunity. So would ask that you consider doing that, and if you want to do that, we need a motion in a second on that item. Would also consider that you allow the Redevelopment Commission to transfer their assets to you, which consist of land and cash. The net position at the June 30th of 2014 was $1,072,21. That breaks down into a cash payment and also a transfer of land and the value of land. The cash payment could go towards satisfying an existing loan that the, that the city is still carrying to the Redevelopment Commission. And those are the things that we ask that you consider doing.
Which one you want first, the audit? Does that make any difference?
It, it really doesn't matter.
All right, I'll make a motion that we contract with Eric to do the audit of the monies coming from the Redevelopment Commission.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay.
And we also believe that doesn't need to wait till June 30th, that, that can occur in the next little bit, and we'll file it with the state and be done with that.
Motion to accept Morganton Redevelopment Commission assets as payment in full for any outstanding debts with the City of Morganton, and declare the East Union Street Redevelopment Area substantially complete.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion of this?
I'd like to throw out an option on the, the cash that is left. During the 20 years that the Redevelopment Commission has been in business, there have been quite a few people that have been faithfully serving that commission, and they've done a great job. They've spent a lot of time, and the same is true of a lot of staff people. Lee Anderson, Kim Norman, Kim Norman-Wilard are just two examples, our former city attorney, our current city attorney, and, and it goes on and on. And I think with a small amount of the cash that's left, there should be a, some type of function that would recognize the accomplishments that have happened during this 20 years, and also recognize those people that have contributed to those accomplishments. And Sally, you'll have to help with the wording of this, but I think, I hope you've gotten the idea, and it's not going to cost much money, but I think this would let the Redevelopment Commission pay for it, and it'd just be a little less that goes into the general fund. Is that appropriate?
Sounds like a good idea.
There have been a lot of people over the, the 20 years that have invested time and energy in creating what has happened on the eastern side of town, and if you decide that you want to do that, then, then we can certainly put together a recognition for those folks and thank them for that.
Do you need that part of the motion? You don't need it?
No, I don't think so. I mean, but we're happy to try to put that together and, and, you know, try to pick a date and organize that.
Okay. All right, we have the motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Which motion are voting on?
To accept the...
This is just a suggestion.
And can you tell me who seconded that? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Over here somewhere.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Consideration of Revision of Workman's Compensation Section of the Personnel Policy, Sally.
This is an item that, that comes before you. We are constantly looking at our policies and, and procedures and, and working with those. Would ask that you consider changes to the personnel policy that deal with workers' comp. Since Russ joined us as, as the new HR Director, he's had the opportunity to work on this and work with Louis and, and several of us in creating a policy that is fair and, and addresses the needs of a worker's compensation policy. Our goal is that that be fair to employees and that it be applied consistently across the city. The aspect that, asking that you consider deals with the financial matters that relate to workers' comp. Workers' compensation pays an employee basically two-thirds of, of their average weekly wage when they are on workers' compensation. Asking that this policy be reworked to make it clear that employees who are on workers' compensation would be entitled to use accrued sick time, accrued vacation time, and comp time that they have on their balance here toward getting that other third of, of their average weekly wage paid. That's a fairly standard way that that is treated among other governmental entities. In the private sector, sometimes, sometimes not. Some governmental entities don't do that. In looking at this, would like that the employee be required to use the comp time first and then move through the other time. Obviously, they're using time that they've accumulated, which is time that they have earned. That would help to make their check hold during that time, allowing, basically, logistically for the ease of deductions and things that have to come out of paychecks. If we don't do that, then we have to try to collect that in some other manner. And basically, they've earned the time, and it belongs to them. In no case would the employee be able to get a benefit that exceeds their normal pay.
I make a motion to approve the amendment to the city's personnel policy to provide that while an employee is out of work and receiving workers' compensation benefits, the employee may use accrued compensatory time, sick leave or vacation leave to replace the one-third of wages or salary, not replaced by workers' compensation benefits, provided that the total received shall not exceed the employee's normal weekly salary or wage.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, consideration of a purchase, a new trailer-mounted sewer inspection camera system for the Distribution and Collections Division, Sally.
This is a, a purchase that we had budgeted in this year's capital improvement program. We are looking for ways to be able to assess our pipe condition and make repair decisions, and, and to try to do those in a more efficient manner. We budgeted $65,000 for the purchase of this equipment, have priced this out through the state co-op, and recommending that we purchase through that to Riders and Jet Supply Company. However, the price is $73,59. We have identified savings within the line items in the CIP budget to be able to do this in the wastewater fund budget. And Brad is here if you have any questions about the workings of, of the camera and, and that kind of information.
I move to approve the purchase of a trailer-mounted sewer inspection camera system from Riders and Jet Supply Company for $73,359.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Discussion.
Does this, this camera read underwater? Does the camera read underwater?
No, it won't be able to look through a pipe that's full of water.
It's a little scary to turn him loose with showing us some of the things that he sees.
He, he didn't bring pictures tonight.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Consideration of Award of a Contract for a Columnarium, Sally.
This is a project that we also started working with back at budget time, and budgeted some funds in order to be able to construct a columbarium at the Forest Hill Cemetery. Scott Lookadoo and Stephen Mills have been working on it. You recall that we took a visit out there, we looked at some possible locations, we picked a site where we thought it would work, and talked about several different designs that could happen. Since that time, they have put together the proposal, they have gone out and gotten bids on this project. Actually, they, they got three different bids, two, and, well, really four bids, two from the same company. Recommending to you that we go with Ridge Line Building Corporation of Morganton. They are the lowest responsible bidder that bid a turnkey job where the city doesn't have to do the, the ground preparation and some of the work with that. They also bid 100 niches, and, and the wall structure that, that we feel like is going to best serve the look that we're looking for, and, and make the project conducive to paying the respect and having the families able to be proud of where they are choosing to enter. Looking at a total price of $38,754, we budgeted $50,000. There will be some more money to get spent if we move forward with this, because ultimately we're going to have to do a little bit of landscaping and, you know, just some future work around there. You have included in your packet, the, the proposal, when we first looked out there, we were talking about, well, lack of a better description, round structures where, where the niches would be constructed in a round manner. In looking at that, there was concern about how that would logistically work. Additionally, what you're looking at now is an area that allows debris and things to blow through the area. It's not completely walled in, so things won't get trapped in there, and that seemed like a, a pretty important consideration. So you have the new proposal, which includes the, the brick paver-type walkway, and the niches being located along three sides of the area that you would, yes, like a trap is a wig kind of like.
Eight-two at the bottom, correct?
It is.
Okay.
Motion to award a contract to Ridge Line Building Corporation of Morganton in the amount of $38,754 for the columbarium to be placed at Forest Hill Cemetery.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second. Any discussion?
Sally, we hadn't gotten around yet. We've not got far enough to talk about fees and all that sort of thing.
No. As a matter of fact, the, the other thing that, that this proposal includes is, is the fronts that will be on there. One of the proposals that we got didn't include that, and that was going to have to be purchased later. We don't have the full construction schedule yet, they're going to work that out if, if we're going to move forward with this tonight, and then we will bring back proposed fees to you later in the spring, closer to this being completed.
I think this will be a beautiful structure.
And you'll have a bunch of those to compare to with, with what is being charged.
I want to thank Councilman Simmons for bringing this up to the city, and good idea. Okay, we still have, we haven't got a...
No vote, right?
We need to vote.
Have the motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Consideration of Acceptance of a Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan, Sally.
Persistence.
Yep.
Persistence. For, for two years, we have tried through the, the state deanor to be awarded a 0% interest loan from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. The project is to construct new clearwells at the water plant. We have finally received notification that after two years of hounding the folks, it looks like we're going to get one. While we've been in the process, some of the requirements have changed. In the beginning, and, and there is a, a closing fee associated with this, that was required to be paid out of your funds. Now the program allows you to pay that out of borrowed funds. We're borrowing at 0% interest. Basically, you spread that cost over the life of the loan, and we would recommend the budget amendment of 23,552 to recognize us borrowing that as well, so that we take full advantage of the 0% interest loan. So we actually need two motions, which one would be to do, to accept it, and then the second would be the budget amendment.
Sally, is this $1,273, is it paying off some other loans that we have already secured?
No, this is, this is all new. And, and you'll recall, however, though, we have old debt that is being retired. And we budgeted $1,250 for this originally.
Oh, okay.
I make a motion to accept the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund loan in the amount of $1,273,552 at 0% interest.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Next is a budget amendment for...
I make a motion that we do a budget amendment for $23,552 for this project.
Check.
Okay, motion second. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. All of, never have done it. We got another one, by the way, your pink sheet that you got. Consideration of An Ordnance Established in a Speed Limit of 35 Miles Per Hour on Burkmont Avenue, a part of the North Carolina State Roadway System in concurrence with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Sally.
I actually have three items under other items that I'd like to talk to you about, this being the first one. In 1996, the speed limit on Burkmont Avenue was dropped out there by the Community College to 35 miles an hour. That is a state road, obviously. We concurred with that change. They think we concurred with that change, we think we concurred with that change. They called last week and said, "We don't know where the paperwork is, have no idea." So this is just filing the paperwork for the change that's already occurred.
Okay.
So...
I move we authorize establishing a 35 mile an hour posted speed limit on Burkmont Avenue from I-40 to Fleming Drive and execute municipal certification with NCDOT.
Second. Motion second. Discussion.
When would this take effect? Immediately?
It's already there.
Immediately. Yesterday. It's not sooner.
I'll have to slow down.
And you'll notice on, on their paperwork that Fleming Drive is spelled differently, and we called and asked about that, and, and that typo has existed in the DOT records since, when did it take?
1972, I believe.
1972, and he says if we change it and spell it right, that we have to go basically through an act of Congress, and so it's still spelled incorrectly. But we're pretty sure that we all agree with what location we're talking about.
Well, I certainly hope you got the names spelled right.
I hear you. You know, that name's hard to spell.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Sally, you got other?
I do, I have two other items. The first one, and it's a little booklet laid before you. You, you recall that in January, at the meeting, we approved the application for a Partif Grant for the third phase of the soccer complex. As a part of that... As a part of that, there has to be a master plan prepared, and Gary's here to answer any questions if we have them. Basically, what you have before you is the site analysis. It talks about the soil, the flood plain, and if you look through that, there's lots of pretty maps and lots of different colors. They require all this information, the utility analysis that locates the utilities on the property, and those kinds of informations required to go into the state. It also includes the 2011 survey from the Rec Advisory Commission, which talked about needs, recreational needs and desires and wants in Morganton. That's another thing that they require. You have the map that you looked at when you approved us applying for the grant in the first place, and then the coverage in the News Herald for the public hearing that was held as a part of the process. This is just something else that they require in the documentation to apply for the grant, so need to ask you all to accept that tonight and allow us to include it with the application.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion.
Just one, Sally, is there a large need for a croquet course in western North Carolina?
I couldn't possibly answer that question, but Gary Lynn Hart can.
Okay, I just...
I used to play croquet at my grandfather's on Sunday afternoon.
We'll know where to find you on Sunday then.
Hello, I don't know that there's a large need, but there is a need. And let me tell you a little bit about that, of course, as part of our project, we get points for activities that we bring to the park. That was kinda how the dog park came about, and that's actually how this croquet course has come about. We do have some people that play, and if you look at the survey, we did have some people that we talked about and were interested in. Now, this croquet's a little different than what we played as picnic croquet, like picnic courses use. It's a little bit more of a championship course. Basically, it's, there's not much to it, it's really just like a putting green and steaks put in there, and that's it, you know, you turn them loose. And so it's a very inexpensive addition, but also gets us points and brings us a little better chance to get our grant.
When everything's presented, when should we hear from Raleigh?
July. They'll have the meeting the first week in July, and of course, I'll go down, and we should know within about a week, probably the second week of July.
Very good.
And we'll also tell you, and we have supplied you with the information, there seems to be a lot of interest in the Greenway Connector as a part of this and connecting Highway 70 to the Greenway and connecting a major thoroughfare to the Greenway. We've had lots of folks commenting on that since the public meeting and since our last meeting.
Thank you, Gary.
Can we vote?
I think you voted.
No, you have, you have...
Sorry.
Did not vote, we have the motion, the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next.
The last item that I have to bring before you is, as you're well aware, there has been a lot of discussion about smart meters and concerns and information. Have made some contacts and would offer up to you all that at your March 2nd council meeting at 4:00 in the afternoon, we could have Keith McAllister come. He is an NC State graduate. He is not associated with meters or selling meters or anything to do with meters. He is a graduate of NC State, holds a BS and an MS in mechanical engineering, is a professional engineer, certified in North Carolina. He is a certified data center in energy professional. His career includes working with Progress Energy. He is a guru, recognized as a guru in the clean energy field. He has worked with the U.S. Department of Energy. He has his own company now that does work with the department of industry and otherwise. He is someone who can come and do a question and answer session for you all if you want to ask questions and have him respond to some of the concerns that have been made. He, like about an hour to an hour and 15 minutes for that, would recommend 4:00 leading up to the 5:30 meeting. That's someone that we can have and come and answer questions that is unbiased, that's not related to anybody associated with the idea.
You need a motion for that?
Sally, would that be available?
Like some direction.
Would that be available for the general public too?
General public would certainly be able to come and take part in that meeting. You know, obviously, it'd be up to him with how long he do the question and answers. I mean, we're talking about an hour and 15 minutes or so to talk about it. I think he'd be perfectly willing to accept questions and answers. Obviously, you all will all be here and the public will be invited to come and listen.
It's an expensive project, I think we need as much expertise as we can get.
I agree.
Okay, do you need a motion?
I don't think so, I just make it available and we will pursue that and make that happen.
4:00 on the 2nd of March.
Right, what we would need, I mean, this would not be, it wouldn't be, your March meeting would still begin at 5:30, but this would have to be advertised, noticed as a public meeting where the commission, the council members might be there.
Like a workshop.
Like a workshop.
Like a workshop.
Okay, okay. Very good, sounds good.
Very good.
Okay.
Mayor, one other item, I think you're about to close, I just wanted to recommend to the city council, if they've not been in front of comma to see the construction work going at the senior deaf and blind center, they're moving dirt. I don't know whether burying bodies out there, but they're digging dirt, and it looks real good.
Yeah, it does.
They're moving.
Meeting adjourned.
They're moving a lot.